Okay, it is nine o'clock. We'll get started with the December 20th Committee of the Hole. We're going to get a quick update from John on the storms damages and whatnot, and then we'll get back to you guys right away.
Mr. Chair, can I take a role first?
Oh, no, I don't think, not today. Tris, that was the next thing I was gonna ask is, could you take a role, please?
Commissioner Coring?
Here.
I'm nuts today.
Commissioner Brecken?
Here.
Commissioner Barrows?
Here.
Commissioner Hoag?
Here.
And Commissioner Franzine is not here.
All right. Okay, John, take it away.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. Just a quick update from last week's storm. Initially, it came in December 13th, and it was rain, kinda freezing rain and sleet. And we got a little bit of snow Wednesday morning, had a lull, I think about six inches Wednesday morning. And then into Wednesday night, Thursday mornings, when we got a bulk of our snow in all day Thursday. Thursday is really when the trees started to come down across the county and the power started going out. About 6:30, I think, Thursday morning, I talked to Crowing Power, and we were at roughly 4,000 out. They had out of power at that time. And they were already calling mutual aid in at that time in the morning, Thursday morning. It snowed all day Thursday, talked to Minnesota Power later that day. They had roughly about 4,000, 4500 out that afternoon. And then later that afternoon, Crowing Power was up close to 7,000. I don't know exact numbers where Malax was at that time, but I would guess they were roughly the 4,000 to 5,000. So Thursday night going into Friday morning, we had roughly, right around approximately 15,000 without power in the county. That was a big concern, especially the amount of trees that we had down the time, talking to the Highway Department. We were very concerned about how long the power was gonna be out, we knew it was gonna be cold, and getting our roads passable to emergency vehicles, and also getting those power crews in. Really, our biggest headway happened Saturday morning, the day of Saturday, when all the mutual aids were in here, both for Minnesota Power and Crowing Power. And by Saturday night, I think 99% of those individuals without power had power back to their homes, which was pretty remarkable. Less than three days to have roughly 15,000 backup on power. During that time, we were concerned about sheltering and people who needed sheltering. Working with Community Services and Kara with Sheltering and their team, along with the Red Cross, we came some ideas of how we needed families, if they needed help, immediate help, that we can get them in a hotel room, if possible, for the night or next day. We did have one family, or a couple that we put in, they had some underlying health conditions, so it worked out really well. They ended up staying two nights in a hotel room till their power came back on. And then, we had a couple other inquiries, but I don't believe we actually, how was it, or put them in a hotel. We did do some planning on if we had to open up a large shelter, you know, bring in the Red Cross and Community Services staff to run that for a couple days, if we knew the power was gonna be out for a longer duration. But we were pretty confident within three, four days that that wouldn't happen. But then we started talking about doing warming shelters, like during the day. So the Pequot Lake School District was kinda the first one that stepped up on Friday. They had canceled school again, said they had staff there, so from 9:00 to 2:00 that day, they opened up and allowed people to come in, sent a message out to all the families in the district saying, "If you need to take a shower, come warm up, charge your devices, come and get a snack from us, we're open till 2:00." We had a meeting briefing that day, I think it was around noon or 1:00 PM. And then, after that meeting, and extending it to 8:00 PM Friday night, because they had families coming in. They also opened up on Saturday for the day as well, I think from 8:00 to 5:00. Then we also had the Community Center in Cross Lake open on Saturday and Sunday. And then Emily City Hall was open pretty much Thursday through yesterday. And that, they had a number out there too, if it was closed, that people could call, and they'd have someone come up there and open it up for them to get in there and warm up and charge devices, and they had some snacks in there as well. So, that was very beneficial. We're gonna continue to see outages. I just looked, I think Crowing Power has roughly six outages, but yesterday they went from 30 to 2 to 15. And we're gonna see that because of all the heavy snow on the trees currently right now. Preliminary damage assessments right now that we've done, which has come in, have been very minimum, but we're right around 400,000. Crowing Power's dropped a little bit because they got done a day sooner than they thought they were gonna get done, because of all the mutual aid that came in, which is a good thing. So right now, between like the Highway Department and a couple of the cities, and Crowing Power roughly at 400,000. But there's a lot more numbers that need to come in on that storm. The one underlying factor, like I talked about, is the trees out there right now and the power lines. They have snow on them, and the snow comes off them, they hit each other, and they blow the fuse. And we're gonna, we're seeing what's coming up this weekend, starting Thursday into Friday into Saturday. They're talking roughly three to five inches of snow for this area, light fluffy stuff. But then they're talking about gusts of winds, you know, mid 30s possibly, all day Thursday, all day Friday into Saturday morning. So we're gonna see these power outages again. Well, we talked to the state yesterday, one thing that we talked about is like, can we combine these two events into one, because it's over 72 hours between events? We're probably gonna have to consider this a separate event this weekend, if we get over our threshold. So we'll have to come back to Mr. Chair and probably request that, probably early next week, if need be, if it's as bad as it could get with these winds that are coming. So I just wanna make the board aware of that. So yeah, we're currently in a winter storm watch for this weekend. Good thing is, it looks like on Thursday that the winds are gonna be in the 20s for a day, so hopefully that'll kinda free up some of our trees and not go directly to the 30s and 40s for our gusts. But, so hopefully that's, that will happen, and we get some of the snow out of our trees and off our lines before it gets too windy. That's kinda just an overview of what's been happening. We did briefings Friday and Saturday at noon, both days, and kinda kept in touch with everybody, you know, with our volunteer organizations, with our power companies, with our warming shelters, and with some of our management staff here at the county. So that worked out really good, kinda keep everybody on the same page. Had some people on from the state too, so they could kinda relay information down to St. Paul, and kinda get an idea of what's happening up here. We met yesterday as a region with the state, and I believe Cass County is declaring today, I task a county's gonna declare, Carlton County has, St. Louis County is, Aiken County, I believe, is either today or tomorrow, and then we did last Friday for this event. So the majority of it is gonna be kinda the central northeast part that has declared so far, that I'm aware of in the state for last December 13th event. And for this weekend, what I'm seeing in the forecast, majority is, you know, blizzard conditions are gonna be just south of us for a couple of days, Thursday, Friday, probably impacting travel immensely. So, if people can get out, get their loved ones here, if they have to travel before Thursday night, it's a really good idea. Do you have any questions for me?
So, Mr. Chair, if I might, I would like to take the opportunity, John, to thank you for taking the lead on this. Community Services, for all the efforts they've made to accommodate these individuals. But also Pequot, Emily, and Cross Lake for their stepping up to the plate for at least warming, and maybe a warm meal and a shower. I think that we should acknowledge that. I think the public should know that these individuals or these groups stepped up when they were needed to help the people that were most impacted by this storm. And I just think that it shows the planning that's gone into this is, has been done well. And I think that, you know, we still learn a few things every time there's an event like this. But thank you to all of those organizations and individuals that have worked to protect the people that were impacted by this storm. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks.
No, I'm Steve.
What?
I'm Steve.
Oh, thanks, Steve.
You thanked John, but...
Man.
Sorry.
Something in the air today.
It is appropriate to thank John, you know. I never call him. He always calls me. And it's because he's on top of it, before I get there.
Try me.
We're lucky to have, we're lucky to have John, and what I most appreciate is, he just stays calm. He's always calm. He's in the middle of working on some emergency and stays calm. That reassures people. We got this. So, thanks, John.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chair, and I didn't say this, but the communication that was utilized during this and the follow-up, I think has been very important, to acknowledge these people and what they're doing, but to let them know where you're at, and where the county is at in applying for emergency aid and that. So, thank you very much.
Yep, and definitely, this is gonna be a long recovery process with this event. Talking to the Highway Department, it's not, we're not gonna have all the road rightaways cleaned up in the next two weeks. It's gonna take till spring, if not, you know, once all the snow melts. One of the big hurdles we're trying to figure out right now is with the trails, snowmobile trails. It operates a little bit different than ATV trails in the summertime on who gets paid or who's responsible for maintaining them, if it's volunteers, or if it's hot work. So I'm working with Land Services on that. That was a big discussion we had yesterday, because we know that the trails are a huge industry for us up here with tourism. And I saw a post last night up in Emily, the sightings of snowbirds up there. They work seven hours and got one mile cleared. So, there, the trails are just devastated. I know I talked to, I think the crew that's down here, south of town, they had 40 or 50 miles that were bad, that they haven't even got into yet. So, the trails are gonna be big, snowmobile trails are. I know Cass County's talking about bringing contractors just to clear the trails. So that's something we're working on the next couple of days, to try and figure out what's eligible, what's not eligible, and what we can do to get them cleaned up, but I'm guessing we're not gonna do anything till next week. But, and we did a lot of P, press releases too. Darcy's been helping Tim's office, getting that out, and other people at the county, from our lakes, from our snowmobile trails, from our road ditches with trees in, you know, just trying to advise people that are out snowmobiling and stuff, that there's a lot more hazards out there than there has been in the past. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great work. All right. Take it away.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kara Griffin, Children and Families Manager from Crowing County Community Services.
Krista Jones, Community Corrections with Crowing County, Division Manager.
So, good morning. Krista and I are here this morning to talk about secure detention beds for youth here in Crowing County, or actually lack thereof, the availability for secure detention beds across the state of Minnesota. So, we just wanna stress that these are youth that are in need of a secure detention due to criminal behaviors, due to assaulting their family members. So, behaviors that are beyond the scope of us putting a youth in a family foster home, in one of our local group homes, trying to de-escalate the situation. Law enforcement is the first line of defense, and we have representation in the room here, available for questions. But they are the, they are the first that are responding to these youth. And they are looking at, so law enforcement is looking at any and all options or alternatives. However, these are youth that are putting the safety of our public at greatest risk. And currently, we do not have a contract with one of the eight facilities across the state. And so law enforcement is making calls, our agency is making calls, county attorneys, and we're not able to locate beds. We do, so again, this is a problem across the state. We, Krista contacted the eight secured detention facilities. East Central, who Anoka County holds the contract, is willing to contract with us for one bed. And we are confident that we would use that bed. So there's a handout or a table in the handout that you have in your packet that demonstrates over the last three years, the number of days that we've used East Central, as well as the other juvenile centers. If we were allowed to contract with East Central, or with Anoka County for a bed at East Central, that would be our facility of choice for placement. The contract would be initially for four years, and then after that, it would be for five years at a time. We would have a financial gain of a reduced rate, so member counties do have a lower per day cost. And we would also have two, we would be looking for two representations to sit on the advisory board for this facility. We were really hoping to have a discussion. I know that there's probably a lot of questions that you might have, and so, we open you, open it up for questions.
Mr. Chair, if I might, my first question is, it's roughly $9,000 a month.
Correct.
Is there an escalation clause in there? Because it's a four-year contract, that each year it will move up even with the discount? Or is that a flat rate?
There is a potential, as with any facility, that as part of the advisory board, to assess where the operating costs are at, and if the, if it is necessary to increase the daily rate. East Central did increase their, their daily rate over this pa, this past year. And we are experiencing that across the state, from group homes to residential mental health facilities to detention facilities are increasing their daily rates.
And typically, when those rates are increased for those member counties, it is less of an increase for the member county than it is those non-member counties. Like this year, from 2022 to 2023, for the member counties of Anoka, it's a $10 per diem increase on 2023.
What is the difference be, without the discount? What are the non-member counties paying?
$60 a day.
$50 a day?
60.
60, and we're paying how much?
$3.55 is what non-member counties pay at Anoka, and $2.95 is what member counties pay a day at Anoka. And I, I would just like to reinforce what Kara stated about, as you all know, when we're considering out-of-home placement for a juvenile, both Child and Family Services and Corrections make every effort to meet the juvenile's need and the public safety needs by utilizing a least restrictive placement first. That being said, these are those kids that that just isn't an option, due to safety of the child, due to safety of the family in the home, due to public safety. We just need more restrictive options for those kids in order to ensure the safety in that moment. Our crossover youth program has really helped us lessen the time those kids are in detention by getting our crossover worker in there to assess those kids' needs, because those are the kids often that are not yet on probation. That being said, through probation violations as well, we're having difficulty finding beds for those kids that are just not doing well on probation, whose risk is escalating, and we have a concern for public safety. And the number of beds across the state, not only with regard to security tension, but other placements for juveniles, has been declining throughout this year. And we've just reached the point where, with our security detention beds, we're not able to locate a bed. I know we've been in communication with our law enforcement agencies across the county, as well as the County Attorney's Office, who were calling and calling and calling and having to release those kids back home into situations that we're concerned about.
Yeah. Krista, if I can, this would be a contract for one bed?
Correct.
Do we usually have any more than one child in, in, in the need of this?
Oftentimes, we do, yes. You know, we did have that conversation about whether or not we look at additional beds. And that might be something in the future, if this is something that the board is willing to consider. But we just thought, starting with one bed at this time, there's also a lack of beds across the state. So I'm not sure we could contract for more. Right now, Anoka is the only one that is doing member contracts. After reaching out and having those conversations, we were leaning towards Anoka anyway, because they have the full continuum of care for juveniles. So they have non-secure, all the way up to secure sex offender treatment as well. So, having that option in the facility that the kid is already placed in is appealing as well.
So that contract for the one bed guarantees that if we could have somebody that, that'll always be available to us, they will not be fooled and be able to turn us away?
That's correct. And if there is an additional need and there's availability, if we have a second kid that needs detention, because we have one bed contracted, we get the member rate for all those beds.
Mr. Chair, if I might follow up here, in 2022, we're over 900 days utilized between the two different types of facilities. And having said that, I look back at 2020, and there's a significant growth in placement of these type of individuals. Is there any reason that you can definitively identify that there's been such a?
That was partly due to COVID, too, Commissioner. We weren't placing kids. The courts weren't operating at full capacity in 2020, so that has had an impact as well. Just like our jails, they weren't taking those kids at that time.
And actually, I should correct myself. In 2021, there was fewer. 2020, there was significantly more, when you're at 1,500 for the other facilities, so.
Correct. Commissioner Barrows, for 2020, we had 44 unduplicated youth that were in need of secure detention. And as Krista pointed out, we have been using our crossover position to assess those kids once they've been placed in detention, to see if chemical dependency would be a better option, or mental health, treatment, residential treatment, or going back to the community with services in place to keep those days low, so the number of days that they're in detention, keeping that cost as low as possible. Then in 2021, we had 30 unduplicated youth, so 30 youth spent time in juvenile facilities, secured detention across the state. And so far, in 2022, we've had 47. So, like Krista pointed out, we dipped down. And we definitely think that what we're seeing in adults, the increase in mental health, chemical dependency, is factoring into the youth in our community.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Paul's still on. How many, how many beds does the Anoka facility have, total?
They currently have 36 in their security detention facility. They do have two other facilities that they can move kids into, both secure correctional programming and a non-secure program as well. But security detention, it is 36. They currently have 31 of those beds, throughout 12 counties, I believe, that are member beds.
And are they the closest, or just that they're willing to do the contract?
They're willing to do the contract, and they have the full continuum of services for juveniles.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner.
How does, how does the, when somebody's placed in, in the Anoka facility, is that strictly all levy dollar?
Yes, that would be all out-of-home placement and county levy dollars. Our, the out-of-home placement budget summary that I have presented before at the Committee of the Hole and the Board, it would be listed under the Corrections, Placements, Juvenile Detention. So those are the, the youth that are pre-adjudication, so charges pending, or there's been a revocation of their probation. And that has been an area that we've had some cost savings due to, like we talked about, the crossover program that the Board supported us hiring an additional position for. This year, so back in 2021, those expenses were $91,000. In 2022, we're already at $140,000, and that was as of the end of November. So we also had an uptick in that line item.
So another question, for the Anoka facility, that's a state facility, correct?
It's a county-run facility.
It is a county-run. So there, there unlines my question that I brought up several years ago. Why can't we look into having our, couldn't we have our own facility? Couldn't we, I guess I don't know what it would look like, but would that even be feasible? Or, I mean, I just, if there's not gonna be any capacity anywhere, couldn't we have a facility? Couldn't we staff it? Couldn't we, if we had extra beds, couldn't we do the same thing for other counties?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Coring, we had one. It was Central Minnesota Community Corrections. And we couldn't cash flow it. That was highly frustrating to me. I never understood why we couldn't cash flow it. Other than, the people who were running it wouldn't listen to probation agents and social workers, who were their primary customers, deciding whether or not someone was gonna get placed there. That would have been a better alternative for us. That building no longer exists. And so I think at some point, we may need to revisit this as the numbers continue to climb. I get nervous about it, because it was so personality-dependent the last time. And there's nothing I can think of that will prevent that from potentially happening again. So, how that facility gets run, and how they view themselves as an enterprise, is critically important. They didn't do very well the last time, and we ended up having to shut the facility down, because we couldn't cash flow it. It was losing money badly.
Tim, remind me where that facility was at. Was that at the Brainerd State Hospital campus? Or where do you talk?
You are correct. It was attached to the same building that we called the Jail Annex. So you are correct. You are thinking of the right one.
Yes. I am thinking of the right one.
Detox is another area that might be the same kinda thing, that we need to revisit at some point in time. I don't know that we ever take into account the cost of the law enforcement officer, the run back and forth to Cambridge, I think that's where this one is, isn't it?
Lionel Lakes.
Okay, even further. And we, that's a cost that we incur. And it gets to be very, very expensive, running people back and forth just for 15-minute court appearances. I wish the court would be a little more flexible. They were for a while. I would like them to continue to be. But I think you're raising a reasonable point. It's something we probably should revisit at some point in time. I don't know that I think we have the volume of our own, but we might wanna think about something from a regional perspective. We, we've done a really good job of working with the other counties in Region 5, for instance, on mental health issues. Maybe there's something there. So, I think you're scratching at the right itch. I just don't know what the solution is right now. I think this is probably what makes the most sense for us, get a better rate for something we know we're gonna use.
Well, this is where I worked. Paul, this is where I worked, so I've got an inside view of it, and it didn't work out the last time.
Well, what concerns me the most is, is, I think, when it comes to, like, the Highway Department, I think we can kinda project how much we're gonna spend a year. With this out-of-home placement thing, I think it's kinda like the, I don't know what else to say, but like the Wild West, you don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, it could be, one year it could be no out-of-home placements, the next year, very few out-of-home placements, the next year it could just skyrocket. It's just hard to say. And, I don't know, it's pretty hard to budget, and pretty hard to govern when you don't know what's gonna happen. So I somehow, I guess I'd like to try to have a conversation sometime of how we try to mitigate that. And if that means, yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know, it just scares me.
You know, there's been a lot of mitigation strategies that we have put in place. The CIBS work comes immediately to mind. And that is, trying to keep these kids within our community as much as possible, and provide the services around them. It's the cheapest alternative. And when we talk about out-of-home placement, there's really two distinct categories there. The bad acts of the parents and the bad acts of the kids. And so, most of our out-of-home placement expense is for the bad acts of the parents. But these expenses that we're talking about today are probably, more likely, the bad acts of the child. So what we're talking about here isn't kids that are just acting out and skipping school or stuff like that. They're threatening to kill their parents or something like that. It's criminal behavior. And so it's, it, we talk about these things in a very sanitary environment, but the reality is, these kids that are going into placements have committed a very serious act. And I'm fully supportive of trying to find community-based alternatives where we don't sacrifice the safety of the public.
We've got some visitors in-house, and I see some online. If you wanted to add anything to the conversation, please come forward, or... You don't have to, but you can.
Hi, this is Chief Taylor from the Bureau of Police Department. Hey, I just wanted to just chime in and say, I sat through a lengthy conversation with Ann Solberg from the Crowing County Attorney's Office and... the Crow Wing County Attorney's Office. And from a small department standpoint, we don't use this very often, but I do know that this is definitely a need in our county. As when I do need to use it, it's very sad when you have to go to the parents and basically tell them that they need to, you know, that their kid's going to have to be left in the home, and that they're just going to have to, you know, protect themselves by locking their, you know, their door on their room, you know, when they go to bed. So I know this is a lot of money, probably, but I think it's definitely something that we need, and it's probably something that we should have had before. And I just think it's taken some time for us to get to where we are today, and I don't think it's going to get any better anytime soon. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Ann Solberg. I'm an Assistant County Attorney with the Crow Wing County Attorney's Office. I am here to voice the County Attorney's Office's support of the request before the Board today. I think that the county has done a lot of really great work through the CIBS program that has been mentioned, through the crossover youth program that's been mentioned. Those are invaluable programs to our county. The issue before you, if I may, is that of public safety. And public safety can't really be planned for. We can't plan for the 911 call that's going to come in today, where a child is out of control, where the family members are not safe, where they are calling law enforcement as a last resort help because they need help, because the family is not safe because of the child's behaviors. And law enforcement responds, and there's probable cause to make an arrest, but there's not a facility to house the juvenile. You have a family in crisis. You have a child in need of an immediate intervention. You have law enforcement on scene making calls to every facility that they can find a phone number for. And when they're told there's not a bed available, what are the options? It's leaving the child in the community when it's not safe. We're not trying to put children in out-of-home placement for no reason. We are always looking at the least restrictive option. But sometimes, the least restrictive option is secure detention, and we need to have that available to us. Our law enforcement agencies deserve it. Our county members deserve it. The public as a whole deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bill, did you have any? All right. Anything else to add, or?
Our intention would be to bring this forward with a request for Board action to enter into a contract with the Central Regional Juvenile Center for one bed, unless there are objections.
Seeing none.
We'll bring it forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, do you know what the issue was with the place out at the state? Or why weren't they able to?
Honestly, that's about a four-day conversation, wouldn't you think, Commissioner Friends? What happened out there? Isn't that about a four-day conversation?
We didn't have many kids. And you have to staff according to DOC standards. We could, according to what I understood, after I was a county commissioner, we were losing money handling this.
And it sounds like sometimes they put individuals in there for minor things that didn't rise to the level of being locked up, and then were released, you know, put in in the morning, released in the afternoon. So your census doesn't stay up to where you need it to be.
And it was to the point where one part of Community Corrections was trying to order the other part of Community Corrections to use the juvenile detention facility. You don't send a kid to jail because you have capacity. You send a kid to jail because they need to go to jail. And there was that side of it, but it was really the non-secure side that I think tipped this thing over. They could not offer the non-secure programming that probation agents and social workers thought were the right things for kids. They couldn't get that programming right. I don't understand why. In my opinion, they just never really listened to who was making the placement decisions.
And I think the problem out there in retrospect was the same as it is over at the jail. A lot of these are mental health issues more than criminal issues.
True. And chemical dependency as well. It's mixed in there, too. So they're really tough issues, to be sure. But honestly, it should have, in my opinion. It should have been able to cash flow, but it never did.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I like Paul's idea of maybe looking at something again in today's world and see what those numbers would look like. But Commissioner Coring, did you have some?
Mr. Chair, I guess just a question is, was that under the joint powers agreement that we had with Aiken and Morrison and Crow Wing County? Was that kind of how it was running at the time?
Yes, it was, Paul.
And I think that dynamic-
But I can't hear.
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was. And I think that dynamic may have been a contributing factor. It just gets to be geometrically more complex when you're trying to get 15 county commissioners to agree on something in groups of five than one group.
And I think that was a big issue, is that each county had three commissioners who had, or had five commissioners who had a vote. But Crow Wing County paid over 50% of the bills. So it should have been divided so that, since we paid over 50%, we had over 50% of the vote, is my opinion. That never gained any water.
That's, that's why we got out of it.
Yes, exactly.
There were multiple reasons, but I think that one ranked right up there.
Okay. I'm sure more to come on that. Next up, land services.
Good morning. All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. I'm glad to be back. It's a cold morning, so it's good to be inside talking about this kind of stuff at this time of year. No doubt about that. All right. So there was, the first attachment that we had was the summary of proposed revisions to the land use ordinance. And the first one on that is riprap, but I'm going to skip number one and go right to number two, which is our study on alternative controlled access lots, and then jump back into some of the other revisions to the ordinance we're considering. So we'll start with number two up there and get right to the study. So, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, as you recall, on April 12th of 2022, we enacted an interim ordinance, a moratorium, which put a moratorium on boardwalks, alternative access lots, and attached dock systems in the shore impact zone in Crow Wing County. So that's been going on for quite some time now. That allowed us a chance to study the issue. We were to undertake a study of the issue and bring forth suggested changes that would ameliorate the adverse impacts associated with the development pattern, and to study the pros and cons of various development restrictions. Since that time, we did hire Ben Olson, who's worked with us in the past. So he's familiar with our land use ordinance and the way we operate. So each time we've worked with Ben, it's gotten a little bit quicker to understand and frame up the issue. So Ben is with us on Teams from Hometown Planning. He's just listening in to see what comes of this discussion. But we, Ben and I worked together to frame out the study that is attached to your packet. We, you know, it's more than 10 pages in total, but as usual, we do try to provide an executive summary so that if you don't need to read the full study and all of the tables that are with it, you can get a quick gist of what came of that study. The goal with that study was really to study three issues. Boardwalks in general, what their impacts are on the environment, what other counties are doing, what the state regulations are, what the federal government says about them, how do we regulate them, and sort of wrap that into kind of a, so what? Where do we go from here with boardwalks? So that's boardwalks. We also looked at alternative access lots, same issue. What are the other surrounding counties doing? How does the state regulate them, the federal government? What are we currently doing? What are their impacts in general? And then we also looked at attached dock systems to a lesser extent, simply because dock systems that go below the ordinary high watermark are generally regulated through our surface water ordinance, which is a different ordinance, or by the Minnesota DNR in general. So we provided some review of attached dock systems, focused mostly on alternative access lots and boardwalks for this study. And at the end of the study, we really tried to provide those pros and cons by saying, we could do generally three different things with each one of these issues. One is to continue to ban them, right, through the moratorium, but continue to extend that into, after the moratorium is done, revise the land use ordinance to continue to ban these issues that we discussed. Secondly, to go back to the system we had before with no changes. So allow boardwalks with the exact same standards, allow alternative access lots with the current standards, which is, we don't have any. We just allow them and allow the planning commission to provide any proposed conditions they would have on them. And then, third option would be to allow those uses, but then add enhanced performance standards and enhanced conditions and set standards for those types of activities. So provide what we call additional restrictions and regulations on those same issues. So we tried to frame that out in the study. And at the end of the study, we went a little bit beyond that by providing, of those three options on those issues, here's what we would recommend, certainly respecting your role as the policymakers of Crow Wing County, need to make that final decision. But we did try to frame out, based on what we saw with all of the evidence and the study, here's what we think might be a good decision, given what we found. So what I'll do is I'll start out with alternative access lots. So in general, alternative access lots, just to frame that out again, is where you have a situation where you have adjacent riparian lots, typically through a development, new lots. And rather than having a boardwalk or an access to the lake principally through wetlands, go on each one of those lots individually, they would consolidate that access into one designated access lot for all of those lots to serve. For example, if you have six lots, you have one access lot, six legal accesses, all riparian lots down the one lot. That's different than a controlled access lot, which we already ban in this county, which is where you allow non-riparian owners to access the lake, so across the road or even further. So what we're talking about here with alternative access lots is riparian lots that are formed for one access, not for non-riparian access, just so we're all speaking the same language there. We found in general that of the counties we studied, which was 12 of them, which is a good number of counties, we actually started out with a smaller sample set, but found that some of the counties just don't address them. So we kept searching. So we got up to 12 counties to make sure we were getting a fuller picture. Seven of the 12 counties at least allow them with no regulations, or allow them with incorporating Minnesota DNR alternative standards. And so the Minnesota DNR in 2005 developed a set of enhanced standards to deal with these alternative access lots. They were voluntary, but counties could choose and local governments could choose to adopt them. And at the end of the day, it's up to a county to adopt those and use those. What we found that might make some good sense is to, on alternative access lot, we're recommending to continue to allow alternative access lots because what we found was there wasn't specific environmental degradation associated just by having the access lot alone, just the concept alone. But by providing a method to consolidate access, you would limit the amount of other infrastructure on each individual lot with each individual boardwalk and dock, and you'd be able to concentrate that. And if you provided appropriate controls, potentially, you could limit those impacts and provide a set of conditions that is standard across the board. So we do provide those recommendations at the end, and I'm paging right to it. We've put those on packet page 22. And, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, I certainly don't want to read, if you would not like me to, items A through K on what those proposed new standards would be, but I can certainly do so if you would like and go over generally what that would look like, or attempt to summarize them. Kind of up to you guys.
Maybe summarize.
No. So brief summary would be, we would mandate that an association is formed with declarations and covenants, so that there's local control. We would limit the number of mooring spaces at the end of that dock to one per lot, so that there's a control in place for that. We would mandate that the covenants include maintenance of any facilities and removal of those facilities. When I say facilities, lifts, boardwalks, and then when they're done with this alternative access, a mechanism by which those can be removed, whether they're permanent or temporary. We would mandate that all of the other lots that are associated with this access can't then put their own individual docks in and their own boardwalks, such removing the whole concept of an alternative access lot if everybody else could have their own, so that it's consolidated. There would need to be a lake study that would need to be performed to make sure that the dock or the boardwalk is being placed on the best location of the shoreline, so that we're sure it's not having any impacts on aquatic species that are in the lake, or the best substrate that's in the lake in terms of soils and the bed of a lake. So that's generally the idea by adding those standards in those alternative access lots is ensuring we have some sideboards on where they're going to be located, how many people are being served with these docks, and generally allowing them, but with a standard. The other big change would be, we would say that they need a conditional use permit to do so. So before, it was just allowed if the planning commission allowed it. And it didn't say whether it was a CUP, or a PLAT, or a variance, it just allowed it. And so this change, again, would be to say, it is a conditional use permit. It would be allowed in all of our zoning districts except those that are commercial, because the idea on this is to not commercialize these uses. And then if a conditional use permit is granted, they would need to follow these standard conditions, along with any other conditions that the planning commission would recommend. So if an applicant is proposing to do a PLAT with an access, they first need to obtain the conditional use permit for the alternative access, then put the PLAT on top of that. And of course, a PLAT is approved by the county board. So that's generally, I stayed out of reading letter by letter on alternative access lots, but having done the research, looked at other counties, that's something that we're coming back with a recommendation for, is to continue to allow them with enhanced standards as a conditional use permit. I can, I'll pause there before I go into boardwalks to see if there's any questions, unless you'd like to hear boardwalks right into it.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question, Jake.
Yep.
So you used the example of six lots. Is there a minimum number where we would require an access lot? So like, just say two. Would that require an access lot?
No. So Commissioner, we're not proposing any minimum. It's just anytime someone wishes to consolidate access, whether it's two lots, three, four, five, six, or seven, we would call that an alternative access lot, and they would need to follow these standards.
So what causes them, then, to get to a point where they would want to create that? What would be their incentive?
So it's a good question. There's a variety of reasons. We haven't seen a lot of them, I will tell you that. But typically, when there's enough cost of infrastructure to put in wetlands in the front of a lot, that could be cost prohibitive for someone to put their own access on their own lot, the developer will come in and try to provide that access on one lot, so it could be more palatable for others to still get to the lake, but not have to build that infrastructure on their own property. That's one reason. There could be other reasons as well, but that would be one that comes off the top of my head.
I think that's pretty much what happened in Trout Lake.
Yep.
The developer came along. They're looking at this, five, I think it was, five-lot subdivision. There was a substantial wetlands to cross. And so, the developer thought it was more beneficial to the purchase prices of those properties to provide that in a shared way for all of them, so that they didn't all have to individually cross the wetland. I think the developer believed that that would improve the sale price of the property. Sort of like you built the road, and so, that infrastructure is already there, and so, people can come there and clearly and easily see, this is how I access the water, and it's already there. I think that's their reasoning, but you're asking us a question about what's going on in their head, so it's a difficult one for us to answer. This is what we have proposed as the alternative to what you had in place before. Do you have reservations about it? Do you want to think about it? Do you want to come back and talk about it later? Or, how would you like to handle it?
Well, for one, need to think about it a little bit more. It kind of sounds like we, again, are getting more restrictive, and I'm not saying that's a good or a bad thing, but I just want to make sure it's...
Think about it.
Yeah.
If you want, we can even schedule another committee of the whole meeting a couple weeks out, if you wish. That would be a special board meeting, but if you want, although I suppose it's tricky this time of year, maybe three weeks out, I don't know. Or, we could just put it on the agenda for the next committee of the whole meeting, a month from now, but our issue here is developers are going to start to get itchy very quickly.
Yes, and the other issue is that moratorium is going to expire April 12th, and we can't, it's unlikely we'd be able to extend that. That would be probably unlikely, so that would go away, and they'd be allowed anyway. So, certainly, we can, you know, have another discussion about it, but we'll probably want to keep it moving fairly soon, as far as a direction we'll want to go, to allow their 30-day public comment period and things like that.
And the other thing you can do, if you wish, is allow for the 30-day public comment period, if you think it's ready for public consumption. In other words, I want to see what people say about it, and then we make sure to try to publicize it in all the normal quarters, lake associations and the like, and see what comments you get on it. That's another way of sort of advancing it, but not committing to it yet.
I think that would help, too.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Corry.
Yeah, that was kind of my question, is what's the process question? Can you just kind of run through that? So, our normal procedure is a 30-day comment period, and then we do have to have a, by statute, we have to have a public hearing, is that correct?
That is correct. We don't have to, by statute, hold a 30-day public comment period, but what we find is that it makes it a little bit more of a transparent process and puts everybody on equal footing. Everybody gets a chance to see what everybody else has said. That's important to the process. The public hearing typically does not generate much for participation on a Tuesday morning, but our public comment periods have done a better job of actually getting public comments. So, we're not obligated to the 30-day public comment period. That could shorten the process if you want it to. If we advance this relatively soon, I would still say the 30-day public comment period is appropriate, but by the time you get to March, it may not be. It's up to you.
Maybe we should, I think I feel like, Doug, I want to read through it again one more time, and then, I guess, can we start the clock now? Or, would it be appropriate to start the clock for the 30-day comment period, get the comments, and then, at that point, we have another meeting, the county board have another meeting, we can digest those comments, maybe there's some great comments, and give us some better idea of a different direction, and then, we try to incorporate that as quickly as possible. Does that make sense?
I think that's kind of what we're thinking.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's more.
Only thing is, the only comment that bothered me is that, wow, this is what other counties do. I don't, I don't know that, I don't know. I kind of like it when we do our own thing. I don't think everybody else, every county is different in their own way, and I just don't want us to be, we're, I kind of consider us at Crow Wing County to be the leader in things, and I guess it doesn't hurt to, if somebody has a good idea, to kind of steal that idea, but I don't, just because some other county's doing it, that doesn't mean it's right. So, anyway, that's just comment.
And Jake, this goes across the, you know, the different lake classifications? It doesn't play a role in that at all?
Well, we were not considering, at this time, to say alternative access lots shouldn't be allowed in, excuse me, natural environment lakes, for example, versus recreation development lakes. I think the concern here is, was just broadly on any lake, with any shoreline like this, to consider consistent, objective standards, so that there's a baseline understanding that if you want to do this, we think it's really important to protect our environment and the surrounding area, and protect the long-term maintenance, to at least have these minimum standards across the board. So, no, we weren't, except for, you'll note that we would not allow these types of things in certain zoning districts, so waterfront commercial or other commercial areas, because they're residential.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm comfortable with that approach, so...
Okay. So, then, the next thing, same study, is boardwalks, and I know we sort of discussed that, hey, we'll take the whole thing and maybe run it out for 30 days, but I just do want to go through what we found with boardwalks in general. Not surprisingly, from my own intuition before we got into the study, when we looked at the environmental concerns for boardwalks, what other counties are doing, how the state regulates them, how we used to handle them, and what we're going to do moving forward, is the state considers elevated boardwalks that are linear on posts or pilings to be not a wetland impact, or an environmental impact, per the Wetland Conservation Act. So, we had talked about that before we ran the study, but at least we have it on paper now, that, you know, we kind of did our homework, did our research on that. We provide a couple of references to some state documents to help with that, but generally speaking, counties across the board allow boardwalks. We haven't found that one that bans a boardwalk yet, and the state considers them to be the preferred alternative to fill, right, which is a complete remission of any wetlands, because it's completely impacted. So, this is the preferred alternative. So, given that short summary clip that I provided, our recommendations are to, and this, again, is on page 23 of the packet, we might pull that up. Recommendation number two is to continue to allow boardwalks, however, revise it to include some more standards. Our current width that we had in our ordinance was eight feet wide. We propose to take that back to six feet wide. It was six feet up until 2017. We increased that to eight feet to match the DNR's dock width requirement, which is eight feet. I know there was some concern about potentially the width of a dock being so wide that it's allowing some other uses that may be concerning, and so, we typically did not find any other counties that went below six feet. And so, and I know, I'm certainly cognizant as well of not just looking at what other counties are doing, but it does help you understand what's working, what's not, where have people gone. So, we would propose going from eight feet to six feet. You could still get a golf cart or an ATV down on a six-feet dock, but it would take away the widest ones. We would mandate that it has to be at least a foot off the wetland. Most people do that anyway, but at least it would provide that question that we get a lot, which is, well, when you say elevated, what do you mean? Well, is it four inches? Is it one inch? And seems like everybody puts it a foot anyway, and that does provide that sunlight gap underneath the boardwalk to allow vegetation to continue to grow, so that the boardwalk doesn't become a thing that essentially kills all the vegetation underneath it, because you can't get sunlight. So, we would propose to do that, and we are proposing to add just some more general standards, not necessarily restrictions, but things that, overtly saying that we would allow temporary or permanent poster pilings. We did that anyway, but we want to make sure it's in there. We added that it's not considered fill. We want to put that right in the ordinance, so everybody knows it's not. But those would really be, other than a lot of just more statements, those would be the big changes, is to limit the width to six feet, make sure it's a foot off the ground, it already has to meet side yard setbacks, stuff like that. So, generally, I would say not a lot of changes to the boardwalks based off our study, other than those two. So, I'll take any feedback at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'm always leery, so I will say this, you know, if I measure a foot off the vegetation, and I do it in April, it's different than if I measure a foot off at the end of July, when there's growth. So, I'm just making a statement, that, you know, somebody's going to use that to whatever advantage they want, and we can't regulate that, so I'm just throwing that out there. That's, it just becomes a question of when they want to measure it, but I think we're doing the best we can, Jake, so I appreciate that, and allowing the sun to be in there and still not totally kill off the vegetation there, so...
Well, we thought about, actually, that very question about the vegetation growing, and so, well, you know, it's a good point. So, we put in there wetland surface, rather than the top of the weeds, or the top of the vegetation, so it would be where the roots come out of the ground, or where the water is. So, we hope that will create a good measuring stick, most of the time.
Thank you.
So, if no feedback on the width or the height, generally, we'll roll with that for moving forward at least, and recognize there may be some changes, but that's generally how that went. The last piece in this study, which, again, didn't focus too much on it, was these attached dock systems. And I'll just briefly state that the docks in general are either regulated by the DNR or our surface water ordinance, so we summarized that a bit in the study, and we already have on the books through our surface water ordinance that you need to stay in your riparian zone, and you need to provide enough setback, so that you're not encroaching on the neighbor's zone, and we don't have a variance or an appeal process for that, and it just is what it is. You need to do that, and so, we looked at what other counties were doing. Most counties did not have a surface water ordinance, in fact. We were one of the few that did, so for those that like the surface water ordinance in this county, and trying to be progressive in that regard, we can say we're one of the fewer counties that do that well. And so, we think with the mechanisms we have in place already with that surface water ordinance, any alternative access lot should be firmed up. Once you get below OHW, that those docks need to stay in their riparian zone. So, we even put that in our alternative access lot conditions, that you must follow the surface water ordinance as well. So, again, I think there's enough restrictions there in that ordinance to stand pat, and we're not proposing to get into that ordinance and change some things at this time. And I know there was a lot of conversation about the two proposals that were in front of us, with the carpenter proposal, about what those look like. So, not a lot on the docks situation. I can take any questions you might have about docks in general, and how that works, but our recommendation is to continue with the surface water ordinance regulations as is, and make sure that's followed.
And to define them.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Hall. We are also going to be defining, it's hard to believe, but our ordinance didn't define boardwalk. We said we're going to do it, but we don't define it. So, we're now defining a boardwalk, and we're defining a dock, which is also not defined. Principally, the difference between the two, that's going to be very nice, is a boardwalk is above OHW, regulated by your land use ordinance, and a dock is below OHW, with a few caveats on the definition. So, we do have a draft definition in the study for both boardwalks and docks, so that they're distinct and different, and we think that'll really help for folks that have questions about what's the difference between a dock and a boardwalk.
Even if they look the same, it will distinguish what the regulations are.
Right.
And they are different from the ordinary high watermark up than they are ordinary high watermark down. The surface water use controls the one, the land use controls the other.
Yep.
So, we're defining them here to make sure that people understand, we treat them differently, even if they look identical.
Right.
So, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, Jake, so a dock has to be removable?
No, it does not. It's, no, it does not. It's just, a dock, sometimes, it gets thrown around a lot, and then, we'll get a call from the public about docks, and we'll start talking about docks, and they said, no, 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 I meant a boardwalk above, and so, it changes the scope of the conversation, because the rules are a bit different for docks than boardwalks. Yeah, so...
So, is there anything on length?
Boardwalk?
Either of these?
No. We didn't find that length was any more of an environmental or a social issue that would be a problem.
And did we not have, I hate picking on the carpenter thing, but that that was kind of zigzagging throughout the lake and crossing?
It violated the surface water use control ordinance. And so, I think the study group came to the conclusion that there was already a tool available to deal with that, and we didn't need to revise the land use ordinance to do that.
Okay.
It violated the riparian zone of its neighbors. Now, in that particular case, a nice round bowl, those riparian zones...
Pie-shaped, kind of.
Yep, and so, in a small bay, that gets very, very tricky, but I think that's where the study group came down and said, we already have a tool in our toolbox for crossing the riparian zone, we need to make sure that the upland stuff is the way we want it to be.
And Teresa, if we scroll up a bit to recommendation two, and it's number C, or letter C, excuse me, you'll see it says, proposed for a change to our boardwalks, boardwalks shall be constructed to be perpendicular to the shoreline to the greatest extent possible. So, that should kind of nip that in the butt a little bit. I was a little soft on that, because it can never be perfect. It allows us to get it right.
The only thing is, if you have pie shape, you get far enough out there, and you're getting to, trying to get to a depth, you start to encroach on the accessibility of other riparian lots, so, but we can't stop everything, so it's, we do the best we can.
And what we would say, then, if you're trying to get an alternative access lot with a CUP, one of the conditions is, you must meet the surface water ordinance, and if you show you can't, that's going to be a problem. So, it might limit some of those issues.
Good, thanks, Jake.
So, we've already gone through the definitions, I was going to go through that next. I think we hit that pretty good. So, that's the study, that's sort of the recommendations. I just decided, trying to synthesize what I heard today, was not too much feedback to revise a lot of things, but we want to take this out for a 30-day public comment period. What we'll do next is we'll actually put this stuff into, like, a strikeout version of the ordinance, actually, the meat, get it in the ordinance drafted. We're going to put the study out there, too, so everyone can see where it came from, and then we'll put that out for a 30-day public comment period. And Tim, and Mr. Chair, are you thinking we would come back to a committee of the whole, then, after that? Or, actual county board meeting? I would think a committee of the whole, but...
Yeah, I think that would be a better place to discuss it.
The problem is, if we're going to have a 30-day public comment period, here we are in the regularly scheduled committee of the whole, we had a 30-day public comment period, we're going to miss next month's committee of the whole, and then we're talking about the one after that. Do we want to wait two months?
Can we plan on one, and just win the 30-day, you know...
We could schedule one in there, if you wanted to, just this.
I think it would be February.
Keep it moving.
Could we have a special one right after our last meeting of January? Is that, that's when it would take place, right?
Yeah, we could make it be, terminate us with an existing board meeting, sure, like we did for that Tuesday evening meeting.
Right, it just would be after the meeting, and then we'd meet that requirement and get it done as quickly as possible?
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll figure that out, then. If you guys are flexible that way, we'll figure it out and send you a calendar appointment.
Bill, does that work for your calendar?
Yeah, it's good for mine.
Perfect. Yeah. Okay. We will then, I'll put that aside, and we'll go back to our table, and the other attachment of packet page three, looks like, and we'll start with the other changes to the land use ordinance we're considering. So, the first one up top is riprap. Currently, right now, in Crow Wing County, in our planning and zoning jurisdiction, we do not require a permit for riprap, so long as it meets the DNR riprap requirements, and of course, is not located in a wetland, because that would be wetland impact. However, myself and my staff, as we visit all of our permits... of course, is not located in a wetland, because that would be wetland impact. However, myself and my staff, as we visit all of our permits that are on riparian lots, we, we do follow up on all land use permits to make sure things are constructed as they should be on our lakeshore lots, because that's where, as you get closer to the lake, that's where influences on water quality become even more paramount or important. What we've seen, either by complaints or on these riparian follow-ups, is we've seen changes to our shoreline as a result of riprap placement that can have influences on water quality. And what that means is, even if we're not required to have a permit to install riprap, contractors need to be able to have the space and the room and the conditions to set the raprap, riprap in the water on the bank, and sometimes, what's in the way to get that in is natural existing vegetation, or historic ice ridges, or a lot of dirt that needs to be moved. And so, even though you don't need a permit, sometimes what's being resulted because of that are land use violations, principally through the removal of historic ice ridges, and I'll get into what those are and why those are important, the stripping out of natural vegetation along the shoreline to put the riprap in, even if it was only intended to be temporary, sometimes that becomes more permanent in nature following the completion of the work, and sometimes it also involves an excessive amount of dirt moving to grade above the OHW that might exceed what we allow. So, having said that, I'm going to step back to, to talk about what is riprap. It's coarse stones randomly and loosely placed along the shoreline. They can reduce erosion, but they can also be expensive, and can negatively impact lakes by creating a barrier between the upland areas and the shoreline environment. We have vegetation standards in Crow Wing County that limit the amount of intensive vegetation in SIZ-1, that's shore impacts O1, basically, really close to the shoreline, we only, we only allow 30% of the width of a lot to be intensively removed for vegetation, and we require the rest to remain natural and in its existing condition. We also mandate that on a historic ice ridge, you can only remove up to 15 feet of that ridge as a cut to get your dock in and have a little bit of access, otherwise, we want to see that remained, because it has good function for stormwater retention, fish and other creature habitat, and it has good shoreline protection already, it has really deep roots, it has cobbles that hold it, and has just good, good shoreline protection, and also provides that stormwater benefit. I do have one thing that I wonder if Tim might be able to help with, it's a visual, we'll just do it in order, I put numbers on.
Sure.
I won't spend too long on this, I just wanted to make sure we framed this up before we got what we're sort of proposing to do, so we're going to put up on the slide, so Commissioner Corrigan can see this. This is an example of what's called a annual ice ridge. An annual ice ridge is, once a year, Mille Lacs is a great example, on that west shoreline where the ice heaves up the dirt, piles it up, and then it's left there to sit. Our ordinance does allow annual ice ridge removal, without a permit, it can just be regraded back. That's because it's just a bunch of loose dirt that's been placed there without any rooting or capacity to help the lake, it's just piled up. Next slide is a historic ice ridge. That's a ridge that sometimes has taken tens of thousands of years to be formed by originally glacial action, and then after that, ice ridges coming up year after year after year, but principally, it would have, it would have started with a glacial remnant action. Here we have deep rooted vegetation, trees, shrubs, boulder, you can see the cobbles that are in that kind of root ball on the bottom, and that, that again, has that really important function of, of good water quality, habitat, and, and, and good stormwater protection. Next, next slide, that's in the top-left corner, ignore the bridge stuff in the driveways, this was a slide for different use, this is what riprap generally looks like. What we've seen is these ice ridges and these natural vegetated areas, in order to get the riprap in, are often removed, sometimes they're only intended to be temporarily removed, but oftentimes, what we see is they get reseeded to Kentucky bluegrass, and it kind of remains where it's at. And so, because we don't require a permit for them, there's no initial follow-up, there's no post-follow-up, we sort of rely on a complaint basis, and then usually, the answer is, "I was told by Land Services that riprap is not allowed with a permit." And so, that, that is true, but it's, it's being difficult for us to get ahead of this issue on the front end to help people know how to do the right thing. Do we have one more? I can't remember if we had. Okay, this is what it looks like when the natural vegetation is stripped away from near-shoreline environments, again, that's a straw mat temporarily in place, but often what precedes that is, is, is conversion to a lawn area. Is that it? I think that, or is, I got one more? And this is an example of not riprap, but a retaining wall, and we do allow retaining walls, but under certain conditions, but there is a misnomer that those types of things are also riprap. The function there is kind of to hold the, hold the dirt back and provide, provide sort of a recreation function. What we're, having said all of that, what we're proposing to do is require a permit for riprap moving forward as a shoreline alteration permit, so the same way we would handle that retaining wall, the beach that you see on the screen, vegetation removal, water-oriented accessory structures, other items, it's a $150 permit, just like all of our other shoreline alteration permits, and we would apply the same typical standards that the Minnesota DNR has when it's below OHW, and with certain grades, steep, you know, that you can't have it vertical, you got to have a certain grade, a certain length, and limit it so that you're not putting used concrete chunks in there that came off a sidewalk, that it's only natural stones of a certain size. Realizing that, you know, again, we, we, we're not interested in just following other counties, but I will tell you that Aiken County and Cass County do require permits, Nisswa is also moving to require permits for riprap as well, so some of the surrounding counties have, have been doing that for a number of years, and, and at least one city is going to be doing it. One thing I'm not proposing, or that we're not proposing to do at this time, although, although I will say, from a strictly environmental perspective, it, it is a good concept, but we didn't put on here, my understanding is, Aiken County only allows riprap if you can prove that there is active erosion going on, and there's a need for riprap. The, the Minnesota DNR and the shoreline rules are pretty clear to recommend against riprap unless necessary, they prefer sort of that natural habitat solution to, and it's also a little bit cheaper to provide this. Again, I'm not proposing that in our ordinance revision to add that further step to say only if we can see there's erosion, but, but we would like to see a permit. I know that was a big one, so I spent a lot of time on that, I'd love to get your feedback or take any questions you have about the riprap concept.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I don't agree with it. I don't know, I don't know what to elaborate on, but I don't, I just don't see the need for a permit to put in riprap, we've never, I don't, I don't know, is there a big problem? What, what's prompted this? Just because Aiken's doing it, just because Nisswa wants to do it? Just because Cass wants to do it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Corrigan, that's never going to be the staff's motivation. Let me assure you of that.
I hope, I hope.
That is never going to be the staff's motivation. Here's what I would tell you about it, though. I don't think staff is really, I think we would be remiss if we're not informing you of what others are doing. The motivation to copy them or not is clearly up to the board, and it is clearly your prerogative to either place weight or place no weight on what other counties are doing, but wouldn't we be remiss if we didn't tell you what they were doing?
Yes, you've kind of slapped me down there, so that's just fine.
It's, it's really just that I don't know what else we could have done in this circumstance other than to provide you with the information.
All right, well, I appreciate the information, but my, my question is, is what prompted it?
Fair question.
Why, 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 somebody had to come up with the idea saying, "Hey, I think we should have a permit for riprap," so what prompted it?
Commissioner Corrigan, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I appreciate the question a lot, and as I kind of framed out at the beginning, the, the important thing that we were seeing is on our follow-up site visits for permits that were issued on riparian lots, so lakeshore lots, is we were seeing evidence that riprap was being put in, it didn't require a permit, and then the shoreline and the historic ice ridge was gone, or the vegetation was removed, and that became an enforcement issue, not because of the riprap, as a result of what happened when the riprap went in. And so, that, that caused us to go, this is a pattern that's going to continue, and that we're going to continue what we call reacting to the problem, and then we're on the, I don't, I don't want to say defensive, but we're, we're putting a property owner's position where I wish I knew a little bit more about what I could or could not do with putting riprap in, and the one tool we have to help with that, besides an information packet that says riprap doesn't require permit, is to get out there with the landowner, help them understand that you can't remove the vegetation, you can't exceed dirt-moving quantities, things like that, so we can get on it on the front end, and then help them when they place it, go, "I know I need to talk with my contractor, and making sure that we don't do these other things while we put the riprap in, or if we're going to do it, I need to replace those lost functions and values." The other thing we saw was complaints that we get about, "Hey, this person just took the ice ridge out," and sometimes we'll get there and we'll see there was riprap that was put in as well. So, we looked at this as, rather than being in a position of reacting, and now we got a repair, how can we get ahead of this better, so that we're here to help property owners do the right thing? And sometimes, the tool is a permit.
Jake, another question, how, how was somebody, how does somebody prove to you or us, I guess, how do they prove that, that the, their shoreline is being eroded? How, are they going to have to hire somebody that does a study, or how, how do they, how are they going to prove that, that say, "I, I need some riprap on my shoreline"?
Commissioner Corrigan, that only applies in Aiken, we're not proposing that in Crow Wing.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that, exactly, spot on, we are, we are, we weren't proposing to go there, I understand why that's being done, it's to, again, encourage more natural means, but that isn't something that's on the table at this point.
So, another question, so, other than when somebody creates like a nice green lawn there, and they fertilize it, obviously, we don't want that runoff going into the lake, but other than that, what are we concerned about? Just sediment going into the water? Is that what we're concerned about?
Yes, exactly, sedimentation, nutrients, which sometimes you can't see, unlike sediment, where you can see that alluvial plume right into the water, sediment issue, we're also going to see, once you remove native vegetation in those ice ridges, you, you could see increased shoreline erosion. Yes, riprap does solve the shoreline erosion issue, it is not maintenance-free, however, but you lose those other benefits that, that you get with more of a, a natural approach.
Sediments are bad things for the lake? Is that what it is?
What was that again? I didn't...
Sediment, sediment is a bad thing?
Right, yep, sedimentation carries with it trapped nutrients that go with it, and also, when you put sediment in the water, it's easily suspended, so if you have a good wind event or a lot of boat action, every time, that sediment comes off the bottom of the lake and cycles back into the water, and creates other issues with that.
Mr. Chair, if I might throw in there too, Jake, that there's an impact to the wildlife in, along that shoreline, for some of the animals that would nest in there, you know, your turtles, and you think of animals like that, you know, if you remove that, they aren't generally going to potentially nest in there, so we're impacting our wildlife in addition. But I think it's important that we understand that the natural shoreline provides for the quality of the lake, which actually impacts the value of that piece of property, even though people would prefer to have that nice green lawn going right down to the water, if that lake degrades, that property will also, value will degrade, so, I, I think there's a two-edged sword there when we start talking about this, but it's important that if people aren't going, you know, we all prefer that nice green, you know, when the family comes up, it's nice to have that green lawn and it's mowed, and you can run around barefoot, and that's not so easy to run around barefoot on natural turf, so, but, if you want that lake quality to stay there, then we have to be responsible, and I, I think that's what you're trying to get at without going too far, and I, and I think this is a, a good proposal myself, so, but also, that the riprap should be consistent and across all lakes where we put it in, and that it looks natural, and not chunks of cement and other things that they might throw in there to call riprap when it really isn't, so, I think it's a good proposal.
Jake, can I ask another question? So, how do you see this? Okay, so somebody comes in to get the $150 permit, and do they have to have a plan, show you what they're going to do, and then after they're done with the riprap, would somebody from the Land Services staff go out there and inspect it?
Commissioner Corrigan, great question, it's, it's the same process we have with all of our shoreline alteration permits, so it would go something like this, they would apply either at the counter or through our great new CRM online system, have to promote that when I can, and they, we have a couple days to review it, they would supply a site plan, so in, in this case, it would be pretty simple, it's just, here's my shoreline, I want to add riprap from this area to this area, we would, we would require a dimensional width and kind of a length, we would look at that, we'd probably look at some aerial photography too, to make sure there's no issues there, check to see if there's any wetlands, things like that. Once they've applied for it, and they meet all of our application requirements, which will include a compliance inspection, just like we have with all of our permits, we'll get out on site before it's approved, make sure, this is where the rubber hits the road on this one, make sure before it's in place, we check to see what that shoreline looks like, and meet with the property owner, and if we see it's 100% natural shoreline right up to the edge, and there's no way that riprap's going in without kind of taking out the six feet, we'd have a conversation about, "Hey, what's your plan to get this in while protecting this?" And if the answer is, "We weren't sure, we just need it in," then we'll have some more conversation about, "Let's, let's make sure we're, we're, we're getting this right so we don't have any land use ordinance violations." After we do the site visit and everything checks out just fine, we will then approve the permit. Then, about a year after the, the permit is issued, we'll go back out on the property to make sure it was installed the way they said it was going to be installed. If we have some issues there, then we'll work with them to get that corrected. So, again, very consistent process that we have with all of our shoreline alteration permits. Well, I, I think that's it, I, I will, I always like to get good, clear feedback, so hearing not a lot of, you know, I heard some concerns, but am I hearing anything else from the county board that we should not go out for a public comment with this proposal?
And then, Mr. Chair, just to let you know, there are some other things in here, addressing and street sign, street name signs, some winter agreements, tower facility standards, we had talked about that once before, so there are some other sundry items in here that are more, I would say, the housekeeping accumulation of issues that have arisen since the last ordinance update, they are in your packet for your review. Does anybody have any reservations about it going out for a 30-day public comment period at this point?
I, I think, Tim, we should probably go through change number 12 on page three, that was a big one.
Okay.
I think we should work through that one. So, if we could pull that up, that would be on packet page five.
Oh, five. Commercial storage buildings?
Yes. This is following up on our last committee of the whole meeting from last month on how to deal with the issue of, we had discussed, we have contractors and employees that are using a residential storage or garage, and right now, again, with the advice of our And right now, again, with the advice of our legal counsel, we have said that that is a commercial business and needs to either be rezoned commercial, which would create a spot zoning issue, or the use must cease. There was no other alternative in our current land use ordinance. So we had a discussion at a committee of the whole last month about how to deal with that current dilemma. So based on your feedback, I came back with two options to consider. They're in the lower right hand of your screen. One is to either A, add a definition of commercial storage building, to the commercial storage building, the following sentence. A commercial storage building is also a building that is used by employees to store equipment and materials of building, plumbing, painting, heating, landscaping, septic system, or other trades that perform their work off-site. That is also considered a commercial storage building. So what that means is it would require a conditional use permit, because all commercial storage buildings require a conditional use permit. This adds clarity that this specific use that we're talking about here, the storing of materials of this nature where employees are coming in and out, that's kind of the bottom line, we would require that also to be a commercial storage building and mandate a CUP before that use happens. That's option A. That's sort of, right now, it's either commercial or it's not allowed. This would sort of be that, I, I want to say, middle road, which is allowed by a CUP. Or the other option is to add a new definition of non-commercial storage building, stating the following. A building that is used for non-commercial purposes, including those buildings used by employees to store equipment and materials of plumbing, painting, et cetera, the same thing I just said, except for in this case, we're explicitly saying, we're just going to allow that. We're not going to consider that a commercial use for that narrow band, and it's allowed in basically all land use districts. So that's what we came back with, is those alternatives. Would love to get your feedback on if we hit the mark on one of those, or if you'd like to see something different that, that we didn't consider.
So your second option is how we're operating today, basically?
It is not. Our current operation is that is not allowed unless it's a commercially zoned property. And so there wasn't really, it's not allowed at all.
Option A would clarify that.
Option A would, would allow it with a conditional use permit. Option B would just allow it with no CUP. Both are different than what we're currently doing right now.
So, Mr. Chair, if I might, on option A, I'm a little conflicted. If we're going to call it a commercial storage building and yet we're in a residential area, I don't quite understand why we're not rezoning it. And I realize that's spot zoning, and I'm not a fan of that. I don't, I don't know how you meld the two together.
Well, a great question. We already do, Commissioner.
I didn't know if I'd get to the great question today, but now I'm excited.
You know, everyone gets a great question. Everyone gets a great question from me. The, we already allow in our ordinance a conditional use permit in a residential zone for a commercial storage building. So to the question of how do we, how do we have conflicting uses? It's because our ordinance already allows for a very narrow band of commercial uses in residential area that is only specific to the use that's proposed, so it, it really ratchets that down. So what we're saying is if we just tweak the definition of that already allowed use with a CUP to make sure it's clear that you need a CUP for this, too, then it's easier for everyone to understand, ah, that is a commercial storage building.
So, Mr. Chair, under that, you could not put signage up saying, Steve's Electric Shop. I'm using it for storage, you know, just so my workers can, I can have things there because I'm up, I'm way down in, by Garrison, and I do a lot of work down there. So I couldn't put a sign there?
You could.
The CUP, would that be?
You could, unless the board, a planning commission says no. So technically, we've allowed commercial storage buildings to have a sign. It needs to meet sign standards, so it's not a 200 square foot sign. It's more like a, a 70 square foot sign or less. But it couldn't be lighted, but there could be a sign theoretically.
So I just, my concern is that we're not rezoning, but we're going into a non-commercial zone, and yet we're going to allow signage to say that there's a commercial setting here?
Well, we've, it's a good question, but we already do that with our, yeah, that, we already do that with our existing commercial storage building, conditionally used permits that we have. So we haven't, at least from the public standpoint that I've heard, had a problem with that, specifically that I've, I've had complaints about a sign that, that is an issue, where we typically see it is when the sign is lighted, is illuminated, and has rotating signs in a residential neighborhood. That's not what would be happening here.
So I can go a step further and argue against myself. So I have a garage and I, and I like old gas station signs and I stick it on the side there. Nobody knows that, that that isn't a business. It could look like a business. If I, if I had a QuickTrip sign on there, for example, which is today's gas stations, nobody would know that I wasn't part of a QuickTrip organization. So I'm arguing against myself here, and yet it's a collectible to me as the owner of that property, but it doesn't function as a commercial building.
What I think is probably important here is to allow the neighbors to weigh in. I think that's the issue that you're running into, is neighbors have issues sometimes with these things, not all the time. And so trying to ferret out which one you're going to have an issue with and which one you won't, the conditional use permit process is a nice way to invite people to come. Here's what someone's talking about doing. What are the limitations we need to place on this in order to balance the quiet enjoyment of the neighbor's property? If you're going to allow it, I think A is a good alternative. B is a good alternative if you want to permit it. Continuing to do the same thing as we're doing now would prohibit it. If that makes sense. Those are your, kind of your choices. And if I had my druthers, if I were king for a day, I would probably suggest that you should go with option A, because you will involve the neighbors in the conversation. That does not mean that if the neighbors all band together and say they don't want it universally, that that's the only data point that the planning commission will consider. It's not, and it can't be. From a legal perspective, that can't be. But it is certainly an important data point that could get considered.
So Jake, are we just talking off-site storage? Not, not the, you know, the little two, three employee type where their home is and then they built a, a storage shed for, for supplies? What, what about those?
So if you live, if you live on the property and that's your primary residence, then that's what we call a home business. Now, that still requires a conditional use permit if the stuff is stored outside, if it's outside. But if you live on the property and you just want to store your things in a shed for your business and you don't have employees, that's really the kicker here, is a lot of this employee stuff. That's what's creating the commercial issue, this business issue. Yep.
It's the traffic, and it's probably when it's occurring.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I like option A also, and then, but I would want to see what the public says.
Okay.
You don't want to allow it, keep doing what you're doing.
Yep.
If you do want to allow it with no permits, do option B. If you want to allow it with a conditional use permit, option A.
And maybe I can steal Paul's question here. Has this been an issue, other than the one, or?
It has. Well, we've consistently told folks that have tried to engage in this activity that this is what you, you need to do. You, you can't continue to do this, you need to change your practice. Recently, of course, we had the one that had some additional concerns and wanted some additional conversation around this, which is why we're bringing this here to say, do we need to change what we're doing? I will say that having sheds in residential areas used as off-site, I, I think, I don't have the statistics to approve it, but just observationally, when we've seen an uptick in the number of commercial storage in this area, I, I think that's true. I think we're also seeing a little bit more of this kind of activity where you've got a second home or a trade or things like that. I, I think we've seen an uptick in the amount of it, so.
Well, I guess by listening to the people, if we open this up for public, we'll, we'll find out, I guess, what.
Okay.
Do you have a preference for which one you'd like us to float?
No. I like them both. I mean, they're, they're, to me, it's kind of two different issues. Are you actually working out of the building or aren't you, or are you just storing? Because if you're, if you're actually doing work out of the building, then it definitely is commercial. But if you're just storing things, I don't know, maybe I read it wrong, but anyway, that's my opinion.
We're just trying to figure out what you want us to publish.
Yep.
I just always like to read what the people say before I make a final decision.
Right.
Preferences for which to publish? I hear from two of you. Actually, I've heard from three of you. I just haven't heard a consensus.
So B is like it is today, is what you're saying?
No.
Three things.
Today is not allowed.
Today is not allowed at all.
Yeah, so B, B would be to state that it is allowed without a CUP. You can just do it. So if we were to get a complaint, for example, someone saying, these employees are going in and out, grabbing their things, da, 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 we would say, yep, that's an allowed use in that area, and there, there is no permit required. A is saying, if you're going to engage in that activity with employees, you need a conditional use permit first. What we're currently doing is saying, it's just not allowed. You need to change the zoning.
Well, there again, you could have two employees versus 20, and that's a different, so I, I just don't, I don't want to give these, you know, small business people that employ two or three people.
Right.
You have them, have to go through this stuff, especially given they've been operating that way for years. So I don't know. It's, it, it's kind of an all or nothing type deal for these people. And I, I don't know if, again, if, if number of employees plays a role or not, but I, I don't know how you control that either, so.
Could we make that play a role?
The number of employees? The only, the only thing I'd have to check on is how we would objectively measure number of employees and how we show proof of that. And then we get complaints that I saw five and...
The same way you objectively see how many people are in a VRBO.
Yeah, well, I understand your point. It's, we just want to make sure when we're putting that kind of control in place that we have a reasonable way to, to make sure we enforce it. So, yeah, it's, it's certainly something we can, we can look into if that's a concern or...
Because it is really different if you're in a residential neighborhood, if two people are going into a garage compared to 20.
How many, what's the volume that you typically see in these kinds of circumstances? Is there a lot of variation like board members are concerned about or not? What do you see?
I, I would say it's fairly small scale in terms of the number of employees.
So have you seen a circumstance where there were 20?
No.
That you know of?
I would say no.
And so if, if that's the case, which I think is the, the deal, you're probably driving yourself towards B, option B.
Yeah, and the only other issue is...
And then you can always revisit if we find that this is growing as a larger problem than that, or you start hearing complaints, then we can always revisit it and make a change, of course. But what I, what I have heard from three of you is a desire to permit it as long as it isn't getting out of hand.
Well, out of hand is a...
In the eyes of the beholder, right? How I define that is, how many calls you getting?
I've never gotten one.
Right. So it's not a hu, this isn't a huge issue. It's a very narrow, very small issue, but we're just trying to resolve it for you, that's all. So I think I've heard what I needed to hear. You have anything you want to add?
Nope.
All right.
Well, the, the rest of the table, as Tim framed up, I can either go through those. They are more minor in nature, but I, I didn't want to go down the road of publishing it and wish we had a conversation beforehand. So I can walk through some of these other ones fairly quickly if you'd like, or, Mr. Chair, members of the board, kind of at your prerogative.
You have it in your packet. Do you want to have a conversation about any of them that are in your packet that Jake hasn't already talked about?
What are the wishes?
I'm fine.
Do we want to have Jake run through those, or?
It's, it's these three pages that are in your packet.
Right.
Riprap, alternative access, we've talked about those. He did not talk about the pools and hot tubs. We talked about boardwalks. We did not talk about addressing and street name signs, but we have talked about that before. Winter agreements, we've talked about before. Tower facility standards, we've talked about before, and the boardwalk definition, dock definition, riprap. Here's an additional definition for the start of construction. We just talked about the commercial storage. And then there are these three changes on conservation developments, maximum impervious standards. That's it.
Yeah, those last three that Tim mentioned, the conservation developments is a change as a result of some litigation we had and kind of where the practice wasn't matching what the ordinance says. Those are, those need to change.
Those are recommended changes from the attorney who handled our case.
Right.
Any reservations about publishing?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and, and then Tim, and everybody else who have participated, I really appreciate your feedback. It's very important. We'll go ahead and, and follow your wishes and, and move on here and continue forward. So, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake, for all the work on it. Yep. Very good work.
Mr. Chair, that's all we have for you today. Happy to answer any questions related to county government.
Anybody got anything for Tim? Hang on, we'll call her a wrap.
It's a nice picture of you on the page there, though, Tim.